It is one thirty colleagues and I am going to take a quick roll call to make sure we can hear everyone. Dr. Anderson.
I'm here.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen.
Here.
Ms. Corded Sanders.
Glad to be back.
Thank you, Mr. Frisch.
Hello.
Hello, Ms. Keys-Gamaro.
Hello.
Ms. McLaughlin. Okay, Ms. Marin.
Here.
Ms. Omech. All right, Ms. Bukarski.
I'm here.
Thank you, Ms. Sizmarhizer, I just heard from you, Ms. Tolan. Ms. Tolan. I hear, your microphone's on, I hear you.
Yeah, it's not showing on my screen that it's off, so I'll fix that, but I'm here.
All right, thank you, yeah, several of us, I don't know, there's been several technical issues with some of us that have gotten new laptops, so we apologize for that. But I am going to start, Dr. Anderson, with Ms. Sizmarhizer first, followed by you.
Great, thank you, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Great, awesome, Dr. Presidio, thank you for this great presentation and all the detailed work here. I have a couple of questions for you and a couple of statements, but there's obviously a lot more here than we can dig into in the one work session. But I wanted to sort of start with looking at slide fifteen. When you talk about the college and career readiness and our positions and our signatures on that, I know a couple, I think it was four or five years ago, and I'm not sure exactly when, when there was some reorganization done and the special ed, the career transition services that really worked a lot of our special education students were sort of reorganized into this, you know, area, and I'm curious if there was any sort of change in budget or support when you had that additional group that you were working with?
Yeah, that's a great question, and I think it was about six years ago, I don't remember exactly, but the Career and Transition Services team that provides support for special education students used to be in the Department of Special Service. But it was so focused on, obviously, career transition that it seemed like a really good fit to be really integrated into our overall Office of Counseling College and Career Readiness. And those two offices had already been doing a lot of collaboration. But we were doing a reorganization of central office at the time, and that was one of the opportunities that we had identified was to bring the CTS program into the new office that was being formed of college and career readiness, so we did that and we moved the budget that was associated with that program into the Office of College Counseling and Career Readiness at the same time, so the budget came with the staff at the same time.
Okay, I appreciate that, do you, is there a liaison within that office that's in charge of liaising back with DSS? As obviously, there's a lot of hand-in-hand coordination that goes with IEP teams and case managers, especially as transition IEP start at age fourteen. Do you have someone sort of assigned to that, or is that a need for position, and I've got one more question on this after that?
Yeah, the main contact, and again, you know, the members of the CTS team, you know, work with folks in DSS on a regular basis, really on a daily basis, but the main person who coordinates all of that work is, you know, our program coordinator and CTS, Ms. Ellis.
Okay, I appreciate that. I'm asking this because I know, you know, we've had conversations about the need for more proactive and earlier transition support for our students, as well as some, you know, transition programming for our tweener students who don't quite fall into data solely or step because they're on the path for a standard diploma. You know, is there, I guess my last question would be, you know, it was very eye-opening to see the difference in budget, you know, the budget cuts the last years for ISD. How has the staffing and budget for Career and Transition Services kept up with the increased number of special education students who may need these services, or who may need services in general? I mean, have you done some sort of analysis on the trend of increasing numbers of students of special education services and corresponding staff that can support the transition work?
Off the top of my head, I wouldn't be able to answer that one, if we turn that one as a next step, though, I'd be happy to get you some detailed information on that. My belief, my belief is, no, no, that's fine. My belief is that it has not kept pace, and we are looking at trying to expand the amount of services that we provide to students. But I'd have to do a little bit of analysis to get you the precise information on that, which I'd be happy to do.
Oh, I appreciate that, and I can add that as the next step, I think it's important to look at our transition outcomes for our students with disabilities and the support that we have for them, especially in the growth in that area. I appreciate my colleagues bringing up our ESOL students and our SLICE students and the need to support those, I fully agree with that, I just wanted to maybe put out a caution about being careful not to sort of pit programs against each other, right? You and I talked about the needs potentially for a strategic program review holistically to see what do we offer and where our priorities are, as well as your program placement to ensure equity and access of that, and so I just wanted to put out, like, is there a budgetary component to that, I look at the change in your budget status, and I'm wondering do you have budgetary room for something like that? If we were to do a program review to, so we could really see how are we supporting the students, such as our ESOL and SLICE students, what are we doing for our transition? And are our programs really what we think fit portfolio graduate in twenty-first century education? Do you know what the budgetary impact, impact of that sort of review might be?
You know, I don't have a precise idea in mind, I think it would be dependent, of course, on the scope of the review and what the board, you know, kind of goals and expectations were. You know, so how much detail we're really looking at. You know, if you wanted, for example, you know, something that was just more focused on, you know, FCPS information, I think that would be something that we'd be able to provide. But if it's something that you want, you know, like benchmarking information, you know, with other schools, I think we'd have to get some external help on that and probably have to do an RFP at that point, because there would be some budgetary cost with it, so I think it kind of depends on the scope.
Okay, I appreciate that, and I think it's important to, you know, put out to my colleagues that you know, if we do want to really look at services that we need and priorities that we have, to really do a look at what we have already. I had one more thing about the arts, so if there's time for a quick go back, otherwise I'll hold that thought, thank you.
All right, yes, there'll be time for a go back, we have two minutes go back scheduled. So next, I have Dr. Anderson.
Thank you, as this presentation is built for us to build understanding regarding the three-point-one billion-dollar budget, I'm going to dive into trying to do just that. I believe this is slide page thirty-one. Slide thirty-one, where you talked about how in twenty-eighteen, there were twenty-five, almost twenty-six positions that were cut. Can you articulate what that represents, or whom those positions represent?
Yeah, as I mentioned, those positions were positions in our transitional ESOL high school. So at the time, we had made a programmatic decision to consolidate the transitional high school that saw, that serves students over the age of eighteen that were ESOL students with our adult high school program. And there were some real benefits to being able to do that. We did consolidate a lot of positions as part of that program integration. So there were some cost savings to the division that were realized, and that was you know, a positive thing in terms of overall fiscal responsibility. But those were, you know, those twenty-five-and-a-half positions are largely those positions from the transitional ESOL high school realignment.
Thank you, and can you speak, I don't even know if you, if you have this as memory, running the thirteen positions from twenty-fifteen?
So the positions for twenty-thirteen.
Twenty-fifteen.
Twenty-fifteen. I could get you the exact breakdown of those, those are more wide-ranging cuts, there were some administrative support positions that were included there, there were resource teacher positions that were included there. And those were the kind of the two main categories, but I could get them, you know, by content area and everything, if you'd like them that way.
Oh, thank you, that would be very helpful. Sticking with this page, I'd like to ask a question regarding the fiscal forecast trends that you have listed there. Early childhood playground upgrades, that falls under ISD? I would imagine that would fall under facilities.
Yeah, it's not that we would need the money in the instructional services budget, but because we administer the early childhood program, that's one of the things that our program has identified as a need for us as a system. We don't have developmentally appropriate playgrounds in a number of our schools where we have preschool programs. We just have the elementary playground equipment, which oftentimes, of course, it's not age-appropriate, not safe, and then the students, you know, don't have access to the equipment that they really need, so that's why we forecasted it through our department, recognizing that need.
Okay, thank you. One of the things that I also want to echo, you heard this before, I just want to lend my support to this conversation, is on slide nine, where we're talking about learning resources, because that is such a huge component of the budget with twenty-one-point-six million dollars, I wonder what space there is to be creative, and I understand and I respect your perspective of ensuring that there's at least a common program. But I will tell you, my child is in sixth grade and I have yet to see any basal, electronic, or physical be utilized or come to the house. So I'm wondering, how can we be creative here to have some cost-saving measures while still being able to provide what you shared as having that consistent program across the division? So I would love to hear more about that at another time, unless you had something new to add, because I do know that this was a question that came up before.
Well, just briefly, I mean, I would say sometimes people don't recognize what's included in here, so textbooks oftentimes, you will not see, we do purchase texts for students that need the textbook resource, because many of our students do need that is the appropriate, you know, medium to learn with, but, you know, for your student, for example, you know, if they're doing things in Orgo Math, if they're doing, if he's, you know, if your kids are doing things in, you know, ST Math, Imagine Learning, those are the kinds of things that would be captured and included here, so we try to be creative in terms of purchasing things that are things that we can't create ourselves. And it would be more cost-efficient, I mean, I know this is a large amount at a hundred-and-fourteen dollars a kid, but that it would be more cost-efficient and better to be able to purchase it than try to develop it ourselves, because of course, we can't develop everything ourselves, but, you know, it's a pretty inclusive set of materials and resources here that maybe aren't as apparent as, you know, a student coming home with five books and a backpack.
Okay, well, you kind of touched upon Imagine Learning as a resource for our students, primarily, I would imagine, levels of proficiency one to three. At least, that's my, that's my experience with it. I did not understand that to be a centralized expenditure, at least here. Schools have to make decisions in terms of whether or not to to use their funds to purchase Imagine Learning, which is a very costly but very helpful resource. Is that essential, am I misreading this?
Well, prior to the pandemic, you were correct, but during the pandemic, we purchased it centrally so that all schools would have access to it. And we did a similar purchase with ST Math, because we needed to provide, again, some core materials that all students would be able to have access to in a distance learning space, so prior to the pandemic, you were correct.
Okay, well, I would love to put in a plot to continue to be a central, essentially-based expenditure, because it is not a decision that I think our principals should be having to decide with their meager budgets as to whether or not to provide this very, very helpful resource to our ESOL students, and with what was just said by Ms. Cohen and others, ensuring that we have sufficient support for our students primarily at those levels of proficiency one through four, it is really key. So I'd like for that to be a consideration moving forward, because I know that is a very costly resource. The other question that I had was regarding the strategic plan, you made mention to it, and I know we've talked about this when we began last year, or pre-pandemic. I would like to see a little bit more, okay, I guess that's my time, it's pretty lengthy, I just started, so I'll have a go back, thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, we have Mr. Frisch.
All right, thank you. I want to go back to slide nine, if we could. You know, the conversation around the two-point-nine million for fine arts, field trips, high school bands and musical instruments, can you talk more about the impacts of these programs? Like strings, orchestra, band, choir, et cetera, on student success? You mentioned, quote-unquote, "other benefits," and I think we've, many of us have read on that, but can you be a little bit more specific for those watching at home?
Yeah, so, you know, in addition to just having the opportunity to be exposed to, you know, a content area like music, whether it's strings, whether it's band, whether it's, you know, fine arts, that a student might not get to experience otherwise, were it not for this program and for this funding. We do know that when students can oftentimes develop an interest in a particular area like this, particularly in our musical programs, that there's also benefits to the way that students think in terms of, you know, thinking critically, thinking, you know, obviously creatively, but there's also research base that suggests that students who can do well in music oftentimes do well at math, because you're activating a lot of the same skills and parts of your brain to develop those skills as well, so that's really what I was referring to, but you know, the huge benefit, of course, is that exposure to something that many of our students wouldn't experience if we didn't have this program, and then the added benefits of opportunities for additional academic success in more traditional subject areas like math and science as well.
So you think that maintaining this investment would be preferable to what I experienced in high school, where the band was a recording played over the loudspeaker?
Well, I mean, again, people will have their own opinions and their own priorities, but professional opinion is, again, this is one of the key elements that makes, you know, our curriculum so engaging and enriching in Fairfax County, so I do think it's a critical program for us here.
So one thing that makes it difficult when we have these conversations about various program budgets is that we don't see the pre-work that goes into determining whether or not certain things should be cut, or whether certain programs are needed. How do you approach that work on something like the ISD budget? How do you approach the work of understanding whether or not all of these expenses are still worthwhile? Or is it something that y'all don't even get into?
Well, at the end of the presentation, I gave you some examples of, you know, the process that we use around an annual zero-based budgeting process, and, you know, I gave you the template that we use to, you know, develop our program-specific budgets. So that process, you know, I won't, I won't go back into that in too much more detail, but that process is something we've used, you know, I think since my second year here in the division, so that does help us kind of, again, on the micro level, as I was mentioning, I think with Ms. Cohen's questions, you know, we can, we can find things that, again, maybe, you know, aren't showing the return on investment, or maybe, you know, we don't need to continue to invest funds in at the micro level, but at the macro level, again, you know, talking about things like, would we continue to have a band and strings program? You know, that's part of our program of studies that's approved, you know, by the board, so unless the board were to take action and say, you know, we don't want to fund band and strings anymore, all I do at the micro level, try to figure out how to make sure that the money we're investing in band and strings is effective and as efficient as possible. You know, and that would be similar for other programs, whether it's, you know, AAP, world languages, you know, whatever the case may be. So really, I'm operating on the micro level, and the larger conversation is perhaps one that the board would want to have on the macro level.
I raised the question because, you know, when I talk to teachers or administrators, I often hear comments of, I don't even know why we fund that. Now, you know, I'm not getting specific there, but how possible is it for us to engage our staff beyond Gate House or Willow Oaks in the conversation around what programs are still reading the goals that we set out for them?
Well, again, on the micro level, we do that, and we do have a lot of teacher involvement on an annual basis around, you know, what curriculum resources are being used, what need you know, what needs do we have that aren't being met, what are things that we maybe are funding that we don't need to continue to invest in, so we get a lot of feedback from the schools on the micro level, I think, you know, Ms. Sizmarhizer had suggested that maybe the board might want to do a larger program review to look at some of those larger programs at the macro level. And of course, at that point, you would want to get stakeholder feedback from students, from parents, from teachers, administrators, you know, as to whether or not a particular program was something that was, something that we wanted to continue to retain. We are, just so folks know, we do have one opportunity right now that we're hoping is going to begin pretty soon with respect to our career and technical education programs and our academy programs, we do have money in the budget to fund some external review of the programs that we offer for career and technical education, look at some benchmarking to other school systems, do some stakeholder engagement around the programs that we offer, and get into some of the issues that Ms. Keys-Gamaro was getting into about, you know, do we have equitable, you know, opportunity and access at all of our schools to these programs, so we are planning on doing that work for CTE and beginning that work hopefully in the next several months, to be finished by summer or fall. But the board might want to do something beyond CTE that might be similar.
Right, very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Frisch, next we have Ms. Bukarski.
Thank you, I'm sorry, I think I've got a bad glare from the sun, so I'll keep my camera off and spare you all. Thank you, Dr. Presidio, this was absolutely very all-encompassing and you know, with lots of detail to build our understanding, and I'm not going to repeat most of the things, there's a lot of questions that have been asked and ideas that I agree with, especially when it comes to return on investment and analysis of programs and so on and so forth, and of course, you know, the arts, and as you said, I think our investment in the arts is actually what makes Fairfax County a premier school system, so I appreciate that investment, and I think it's well-placed. Some quick questions. In the slide where it talks about preschool to twelfth services, you talk about coordinators versus specialists, and then you have fifty specialists, but you only have, I'm sorry, I don't have the slide in front of me, you only have a few written out as supporting, you know, different programs, what do the other ones do, or where are they placed?
Yeah, thanks, so on that particular slide, I was trying to give some examples of some of the specialists by level and by content area. I didn't list all fifty, they wouldn't fit on that particular slide, I mean, I certainly could provide the list of all fifty. But basically, those are, those specialists are folks that are in our content areas, be it, you know, the four core, language arts, math, science, social studies, be it the arts, be it health and PE, you know, whatever the, whatever the content area is, those are the folks that are the ones that are most closely working to develop curriculum materials, resources, provide professional development, provide coaching and technical assistance for the teachers in our schools that need additional help and support in that particular content area, so again, we only, you know, fifty is a large number, but when you break it across all the grade levels and across all the content areas, what you end up with, of course, are things like, you know, two elementary math specialists. We don't have large numbers of people per level and per content area.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you for the clarification, and exactly, I don't think fifty is a lot at all. Can you talk a little bit about, that's feedback is me, the FCPS and professional development? And is that this year's numbers, and how does it compare to prior year's investment?
So, you know, this budget was developed, you know, basically pre-pandemic, right, I mean, it was, you know, at least pre-pandemic. So the initial thinking when we developed the budget was that we were continuing with high school professional development, and we were adding middle school professional development. Because the way that we had developed our professional development sequence, and, and we did that working, again, with our external consultants and program evaluators at Johns Hopkins, was to try to have a year of professional development for the teachers before the devices arrived one-on-one with their students. Now, this year, of course, you know, with the pandemic, we accelerated that timeline and completed, you know, elementary, middle, and high adoption of devices. So this money this year is being spent a little bit differently than originally planned. You know, it's going to, you know, all grade levels, not just middle school and high school. It's going to elementary as well to support professional development with distance learning efforts this year. But typically, the way that budget had been put together for FCPS ON was, again, based on that implementation timeline, and pre-pandemic, we were expanding to middle school with the PD to occur before the devices rolled out.
Right, okay, thank you for that clarification, I guess my last comment would be, you know, the thirteen positions for our ESOL services, you know, I think you wrote, they support some eight-hundred teachers, but I would, I would think that they probably also support, or hopefully support working or with some of our general education teachers, because you know that, you know, you have to be really bringing everybody up to speed with those best practices, but point being, I was surprised at the low number.
Yeah, I appreciate that comment, and I should have done a better job clarifying, the way that those numbers are derived in terms of the numbers of teachers supported, that goes back to our, you know, our budget book and our program budgets, where we look at, you know, the number of specific teachers in that particular content area, so for ESOL, we're just counting in that eight-hundred number, those folks that are working directly with our English language learners through our ESOL program, we're not counting those general education teachers that are so critical to make sure that they're providing effective support for ESOL students as well, so that's why that number's a little bit lower there. But of course, the main point is, the support staff number is the number that we're concerned about being low.
Absolutely, thank you, Dr. Presidio.
Thank you.
Thank you, next I have Ms. Marin.
Great, thank you, thanks again, Dr. Presidio, I really, just in general, colleagues enjoyed this conversation today, I feel like it's been a really good thanks, Dr. Presidio, for all this information. I, you know, as a board member, I tend to prioritize work that will benefit the most students, and I think it was Ms. Omech also spoke to this. I did submit a budget question asking what it would take to expand the Get to Green program. But, you know, can you speak a little bit to, you know, what it would take to expand something like Get to Green, or similarly with world languages, you know? And this speaks to that fidelity implementation, but also, like, AKA variation that you spoke to. But, you know, in some schools, there, it's robust, it's emerging, in some, there's a little bit in elementary, and some, it's non-existent. So again, can you speak to, how could we expand these programs that, you know, even just take a elementary school, that would really impact and benefit all elementary, what does it take to do something like that?
Well, I think what you'll find is programs that, you know, don't really have line item kind of division-wide budgets that are part of the required program in a school, that's where we see variation from, from school to school. And, you know, I think it's a matter of opinion about how big of a concern that is. Because on the one hand, you know, we want our schools to have some autonomy and to have some ability to identify and develop, you know, a unique identity in the particular school. So we don't systematically require and fund Get to Green, for example. But we do have a number of schools that are very invested in that work and doing that work at a high level, and we definitely support that and encourage that. To scale that up and to see it happen in every school, we really need to make that a required program, and we need to provide the funding to do that across the division. And one of the challenges, I think, that arise for schools is how do you fit all of these specialized programs into the learning day, right? So there's not a school in Fairfax County that has everything. You know, there's not a school in Fairfax County that, you know, has world languages, local level four, STEM, computer science, Get to Green, global classroom, there's not a school that has all of these things. So I think what, you know, I, my feeling is in conversation today and with individual board members, is part of the conversation that you might want to have is, is there time, is it is, is there time, is it the time for the board to make some adjustments to some of those division wide required programs that are really board priorities, articulate those in the strategic plan? And like anything, it will take us multiple years to be able to get them into all of our schools. And that might shift our focus and our priorities with program implementation. And, and that would, again, I think be a way to say, you know, if the, if the community's values and priorities around programs have shifted, you would want to have that expressed in the strategic plan probably. But in terms of what would it take to do it? The financial components will have to be costed on a program by program basis over multiple years. The major components of any of those, of course, are going to be staffing and training and materials.
Yeah. And I mean, and when I first came to office, I thought, great, if we're going to work on sustainable, sustainability, whole school sustainability. And we, of course, have been able to do that, but so I'll save more of that conversation for that day, hopefully soon when we can. But I do think when it comes to environmental education, it's not extra anymore. It is like scientifically proven. It's a way to teach science. It's also a way to learn better, headed to nature. So, you know, the science of research, the community effort like is showing us that this is now best practice. So, but relatedly with foreign language too, we know that children learn it best when they're little and yet it all happens and the courses are later. How do we flip that and get that language in? So that's really, you know, so, yeah. I don't know if we need a work session eventually to talk about that, but, um, but it was, okay. Well, so another thing I wanted to ask about is I too would be interested to know what portion of the budget would be ideally devoted to professional development? So I would like to understand that too. You know, Laura James Cohen has spoken to a macro level analysis. And I think that, you know, I'm wondering, does that happen in the strategic plan goals reporting? She claims macro and theory, but then we get more granular, like is the report, the goal report going to be reporting the kind of stuff that's going to help us make budgetary decisions? You know, can you speak to a little bit about the goals and what we're hitting, what we really need to understand to budget the best?
So the strategic plan report that you're going to get later this week is different than what we've done in the past because, you know, again, with most of the division's resources really, you know, devoted to supporting distance learning and return to school. The Office of Research and Strategic Improvement did the reports this year with support and collaboration from the department. So typically, you know, my team would write the entire report. We only provided support to that this year. Additionally, I would say that for our newer board members that, you know, haven't really received these strategic plan reports, it's important to kind of keep in mind, you know, what our past practice has been. And our past practice has been that what we do is we respond to the division's progress with the associated metrics in the strategic plan that are organized around the desired outcomes in that particular goal area. So for example, the goal one report, student success has three desired outcomes, closing achievement gaps, early childhood education expansion and portrait of a graduate. There's 20, over 20 metrics associated with those three different desired outcomes. And the report reports on what progress did we make on the division's metrics? And what did we do to make progress and how effective were the actions that we took in making or not making progress? And what recommendations do we have for changes? We don't report too much on budget. There's a budget component to it that is included in there with respect to new actions that we took in terms of meeting those metrics and we do some return on investment with that. But it's a small component of the overall report, I would say. It is there. But I would say it's a small component and that might be something that, you know, with future versions of the plan, we, you know, the board might want to have some discussion.
Yeah, or maybe just say like, here's the cross link, like here's the correlated budget item. I think relatedly, just to my, my last point is, Ms. Bukarski was talking just recently about, you know, specialist teachers and the specialists. The one thing that we raised in the meeting was, you know, their ISD provided specialist and itinerant staff, but then we don't know all of the staff that are provided for the school. So like I would, you know, incomplete picture and that's okay, as long as we understand and the public gets it. But I think again, to really show the weight of what we're providing, to some point marry that together could be helpful.
Thank you, Ms. Mary. Um, I see Ms. Kathleen Waltz have her hand up. Is she going to add something to the conversation?
I sure do. Thank you, Ms. Darrenet Kofax. And I'm going to leave my camera off. I'm having a little bit of connection issues today. So you will be able to hear me clearly if I leave it off. So thank you for that. And I wanted to respond to the question that two school board members have asked today. And that is about the typical or average amount of spending a school district provides for professional development. And it's, the, the school district averages between 2% to 4% of a district's total budget. And I also wanted to mention that within FCPS, the professional development dollars are spread across the division. So ISD has some of those dollars, OPLFE, other offices and departments, and then every school has a professional development budget as well. So I just wanted to be sure that it's not just ISD, but everybody has a piece of the professional development budget. Thank you so much.
Thank you for that clarification. We appreciate it. Go ahead, Dr. Presidio.
Add just a couple of things real fast and thanks to Kathleen for sharing that information. I appreciate it. And that reminded me during the break, I got a few other pieces of information that a couple of board members had asked. The first was about how much additional funding are we spending for our level four AAP students? And it's $16.07 per student. And Ms. Corbett Sanders had asked about that. And then Ms. O'Masal had asked about the number of fine art students. We have 141,758 students, elementary through high school that are receiving fine arts instruction.
Thank you, Dr. Presidio, for that quick turnaround of answers. We appreciate it very much. I see Ms. McLaughlin has her hand up. She has not had her first go around. And then after Ms. McLaughlin, I will, I will make my comments and questions. We will then go back for go backs. We are scheduled to end at 2:30. I don't see that happening exactly, but we will try to give everybody the opportunity to have quick go backs. Thank you. So Ms. McLaughlin.
Great. Thank you. And I appreciate that this has probably been a long session for Dr. Presidio, both before and after. I am joining late due to a personal commitment. So, Dr. Presidio, I'm just going to ask some questions. And if you've already covered them, I'll watch that later. So you don't have to repeat it. But I guess that at a very high macro level, I'd like to walk the board through how your team. I'm getting feedback. Let me see if I should take my camera off. We'll try again. Did you walk the board through your process that annually SD does for how you evaluate what you're going to keep in your budget, what you might change in your budget? And sort of how you and your team do that before you bring it to the superintendent and the leadership team? And then he, of course, presents it to us in January each year. So I'm trying to just get an understanding of the $100 million or so that that's identified in this program budget presentation. What kind of review every year do you guys all do and make any changes, if any?
Yeah. So just real fast, and then if you want to discuss it more, let me know. There is some content in the presentation about the zero-based budgeting process we use in the department every year. I gave an example of the template that we use when we look at building our budget in each of our offices and on each of our teams that has a number of different criteria that we look at. So I won't go into detail on that. That's in the presentation. We did have some discussion with some board members about, you know, basically that, that process works very well kind of at what I guess I would describe the micro level. So looking at particular expenditures that are within kind of our decision-making purview. But we don't apply that to, you know, large programs. So for example, you know, we don't have discussion as to whether or not we should continue to have, you know, band and strings. We work on the assumption that, you know, the board wants us to have band and strings. And we look at our expenditures within band and strings, within that zero-based budgeting process to be effective and efficient in operating that program. So we had some discussion about that. And then I did provide a little bit of analysis about, you know, some of the budget trends that we've seen that the department has recommended potentially to be included in the superintendent's proposed budget, you know, funding, you know, of course, being available. So again, examples in there about like increasing counselors, ESOL teachers and some other examples of things that we've identified as priorities over the last couple of years are in there.
Thank you. Counselors, meaning that unlike social workers and psychologists, which are in school services, you've got that for our guidance counselors. So the other question I have has to do with, given what you've described on how you all do this every year, what's been the analysis of the IB program return on investment? I know we don't have time in this conversation to go into it, but that is certainly something where the board at a very macro level can show support and appreciation for the IB program. But that doesn't mean that we're operational experts to talk about how much more it costs when we run the IB program in a number of I schools and what, what schools have high level participation and high level IB diploma participation and then those where we don't see very many IB diplomas coming out of those schools. And the, the question about participation rates start to perhaps ring the larger question of do we have IB magnet schools as opposed to just having IB? Are the IB programs the best return on investment for students who colleges right now won't give college credit unless there's the full diploma, certain scores, but AP gives you college credit per course. And for a lot of our students and families, college credit can mean finishing your four years, you know, sooner at the college level with how expensive college is. So that to me would be sort of the type of analysis I would expect from your team, Dr. Brager. And I'd like to hear more about how that's been going to date.
Yeah, I guess I would say, you know, briefly that we collect that type of information. I think, you know, as part of the budget process, again, we're working on the assumption that we're going to continue to have an IB program right now. Because that is something that we have an investment in. It is, it is an approved program. It's part of our, you know, program of studies in our school. So we look at that information and this would be a much, much longer conversation than I can do justice with the response right now. But that would be the type of macro level discussion I think the board might want to have in terms of looking at whether or not, you know, we want to continue to offer particular types of program, be it AP, be it IB, be it, you know, band and strings, be it AAP, whatever the large macro level program is, I think is a larger discussion. And it's more than what we get into with the annual budgeting process in the department. Because again, those large programs are part of the approved program of studies. So we're not really looking at the budgeting process to determine whether or not to fund them on an annual basis. We're looking at how to be efficient with the supports that we provide to those programs.
I appreciate that, Ms. Kofax. If you're taking go backs, I would like to do one because I think Dr. Presidio said is really a macro level concern I've got about who's making operational decisions. And the board can't make informed decisions if we're not getting recommendations from the superintendent about that. So thank you, Dr. Presidio. Appreciate you and look forward to the go back.
Thank you. And yes, don't start. This is part of my time. It's housekeeping, Ms. Mulberg. Yes, we will have go backs. The way I will conduct it is I will go through the entire list as was in order before. You will each have two minutes and at that time, and if you don't need to go back any longer, just please up because I, because I was having such technical difficulties at the beginning, just say, you know, I passed or I, I, I've had my time. So now you can start my stopwatch, Ms. Mulberg. Dr. Presidio, thank you and your team for doing this. This was, you know, an excellent analysis of what you do. And it's, it, we know it took a long time. It's always that self-assessment is a piece. And you said you hadn't had the opportunity to do it almost your entire tenure here. So we are grateful that you have done this. A couple of things, and I will kind of go on some points that some of my colleagues said, but maybe come up to different conclusions, which is maybe, but we will agree that we need some kind of maybe macro level conversations. I know Dr. Brager isn't here today, but we have Dr. Ivy, we have Mr. Smith and we have you, Dr. Presidio. And you realize that, and you're, you are all part of the community conversations that emerged, that, that began. So we could get what portrait of a graduate is. And then from portrait of a graduate, which is the skill set that we want our students to, which skill sets we want our students to have upon graduation from FCPS is we developed our strategic plan. But that was over six years ago now. That was at the beginning of Dr. Garza's tenure with our system. Maybe a little over six years now. So I agree that I think that has to happen, but I think that has to happen in collaboration with the board and the leadership team as to when this should happen. So because that's what our strategic plan was developed on. I do want to just make up a plug here and a note that much of what is in the portrait of a graduate is the skill set or is part of, a strong part of both of our curriculums, AP and IB. But it was, it was more even leaned a little bit more to the IB learner when we talked about that. So I, I will say that out loud. I think we developed it several years ago. And then what happened was, Dr. Presidio, as you know, there were many lean budget years. So instead of talking about all of these good things that we wanted to move forward on, we were talking about cuts and, and stagnation. So I think now is a good time. So I would like to hear from you, your thoughts on that overall strategy. I know you're but one member of the leadership team, but do you think it is time to do that? And, and Dr. Ivy and Dr. Mr. Smith, if you're available to comment on that.
Well, I can start and certainly, you know, if others have comments, I definitely would want them to share. You know, I think the, the board was attempting to start that conversation right before the pandemic. You know, I can remember sitting in, you know, gatehouse where we were having the first kind of, you know, work session with the board on, you know, reviewing the existing strategic plan. I know that a lot of board members had a lot of questions about, you know, the different goals, the different, you know, desired outcomes and metrics in the plan and whether or not that those still, you know, continue to be priorities of the school system and a reflection and articulation of, you know, the community's priorities and values right now. So unfortunately, that process really didn't, you know, take place. It really wasn't even hardly initiated before the pandemic struck. So, you know, I, I think that that is going to be something that the board will want to come back to. How soon you want to do that, of course, is a different question. You know, given, you know, given all the needs that we still have about returning to school. And then once we're able to successfully return to school, making sure that we're really prioritizing our work around supporting students and addressing issues of, you know, acceleration of student learning, you know, post pandemic. But, you know, ultimately, I do think, you know, most school systems do, most organizations for that matter do on, you know, some sort of basis, whether it's three years, five years, or whatever the term might be, some sort of, you know, process where they do, you know, evaluate, analyze, reflect on and, you know, reestablish their priorities as a system. And, you know, at some point, I do think the board is going to want to do that work.
Thank you. I see Mr. Smith came on. Dr. Ivy has her hand up as well. So, Mr. Smith, you're, you're right there. I'll take you first.
I would just add that Dr. Presidio is right on the mark there. We had those opportunities with the board earlier, pre pandemic. I, I refer to this as this moment in history that we're in that will be referring to things prior to COVID and post-COVID moving forward. And so here we are post-COVID and we'll have some opportunities to bring back our best thinking to the board and truly work and collaborate with the board and the community about where we have to go. Because, you know, clearly what we would have considered bringing back to the board in March of last year is very different than what we would consider bringing back today. And so I think that we've learned a lot through this pandemic. We've learned a lot through these different activities that we've had to provide more information to the board. And we'll use all of that to bring our best thinking back.
Thank you. Dr. Ivy?
Sure. And I agree with everything my colleagues have said. And I also think that the board and, and the, and our leadership team will need to, to think about this perhaps in stages and to, to have a short, you know, a short-term overall priority, which will lead to a more long-term one. Because in order to really maximize the resources that we have and also meet our students' needs, we're going to need to have those conversations sooner rather, you know, than later.
Correct, correct. Thank you. I, I appreciate your thoughts on this. And particularly since you have been through the process, both you and Mr. Smith have been through the process along with Dr. Presidio, and, and, and where we, where we need to, to go. Dr. Presidio, I, I don't have many questions that haven't, haven't been answered, but I do have one. You mentioned that, you know, the ratio of specialists and science specialists in elementary school is, is only two per how many thousands of kids? Would that be something that you would think could be one of the first things that could be looked at? Would you like an investment in that? And of course you would, but would you think it's sooner rather than the long term? Like, would that be something you would want to look at this year?
You know, I, I would refer you back to the slide at the end of the presentation that included the things that we had identified in the fiscal forecast process as the most important priorities. So ESOL staffing, counselor staffing, the ARD staffing, and, you know, elementary math resource teacher staffing, which we've never really talked much about with the board, but is critical for a lot of these equity-driven conversations we've been having about making all of our students, you know, are really developing math and science skills. Those resource teacher positions that are in the schools is really the best ways to do that. So that would, you know, those, I would say those would be the priorities of school-based staff right now.
All right. Thank you so much. My time is up, and I will start with our go-backs. And the first three were Ms. Omech, Ms. Corbett Sanders, and Ms. Cohen, and I will take you in that order. So Ms. Omech, would you like a go-back?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Kovacs. Just trying to bring us back. I mean, I had a number of other questions. Some were addressed by my colleagues. But I think the conversation reveals some of how, you know, what I touched on earlier, which is all of us are going to have kind of different priorities or different projects we want to see worked on. And, you know, there's the mission critical, there's what's a need, and then there's what's nice to have. And so just trying to think of next steps here. You know, Dr. Presidio, I think, you know, we talked about obviously the importance of evaluating return on investment. I'm wondering where your head's at in terms of how to move forward and, and make something of what we've talked about. You've highlighted some of the areas where there are major gaps. You know, collectively, we've shared some of our thinking. I just want to make sure that we move in a direction that's actually productive and then also do our part to reinforce what's needed in the, in the missing areas.
Yeah, thanks for framing it that way. You know, always having some clarity of goals and expectations is really helpful for, you know, the staff for sure. I, I think the best way to do that personally is still through that strategic plan review process. Because that is where we take the cue in terms of the vision priorities. You know, we look at other things, you know, things that are discussed at the board table. But, you know, ultimately, when it comes right down to it, you know, when we're dealing with finite resources in terms of money and time, we prioritize our work around the work that's in, you know, in the strategic plan. So I think that's probably the most effective and efficient way if there's going to be some reprioritization of time and, you know, money into, into some of the conversations and some of the things we've discussed about in this conversation today. So I think that's the best way to do it, of course. You know, I still take a lot of things out of these conversations. You know, I can get a good sense that, you know, board members have questions about particular programs. I'm happy to continue to work with people offline to give people more information as individual board members about particular programs they might have questions about. And then, of course, you know, continuing to use some of the processes that we already have, you know, like the annual review process and make sure that we're maximizing that. And, you know, in, in as much as possible, you know, providing the board with information about some of the trends that we're seeing and some of the needs that we're seeing. So maybe bringing some of that stuff that, you know, has kind of lived at the leadership team conversation. Maybe there's some ways to share some of that more broadly with board members as well.
Yeah. And, and hopefully, as we engage on that level, you know, one of the concerns I'm having, and I would hope the equity team can be a part of this as well, is just, you know, we're going to end up where we, we're where we are because of the past. The past is what, you know, you have kind of these opinions, these perspectives on what's good, and, and it ultimately leads us somewhere, and we look at the big, big picture years later and are like, oh my goodness, how did we end up with these gaps? How were resources not given to certain things, right? So in trying to avoid that, honestly, and colleagues, they say this to all of us, I don't necessarily trust the 12 of us to anticipate every need out there or to have an accurate gauge on what's more important than what. So given that that's the reality, I don't know, Dr. Presidio, if you have thoughts on how we can, you know, mitigate the impacts of that on our, on how we might be able to rely on, you know, data and expert opinion as much as possible in, in making these decisions. But I guess walking into that conversation, I'd, I'd love to hear your perspective on how we can, you know, proactively know that that's going to be an issue and, and move forward accordingly.
Well, again, you know, the, the terminology I'm using, I don't want it to be misleading. Like, when I say micro level, I don't mean, you know, nickel and dime, you know, little stuff, right? I mean, you know, when we look at, you know, the program budgets that we're building, I mean, they're based on, you know, evidence-based research about what's effective, right? So, you know, we, we don't continue to, you know, support programs and practices when we have an evidence base that says that we should be doing something different and when we have our own outcome data and our own return on investment data that tells us something's not working. The macro level that I'm talking about really are those really large programs where there's a lot of cost because it's something we're doing across all of our schools. There's a lot of staff members associated with that program. And whether or not that program still reflects the community's values and priorities might be a question for some members, right? So when we do that work, which is really, I think, reflected in the strategic plan, I do think, and we've done this before, but I think we could do an even better job of collaborating with the board to really plan out what that process, that review process would look like, be thoughtful ahead of time about the kind of data that the board would expect to see to inform that discussion. And, you know, again, I think Dr. Ivy said it well, like, we need to use some of this stuff in steps and phases. It can't, you know, all be at once. We're still in a pandemic. We still have short-term. You know, and by short-term, I mean now, this year and next year, really important priorities, right? So maybe it's, you know, taking this, you know, piece by piece, chunk by chunk. You know, maybe it's not doing the whole strategic plan. Maybe it's doing one goal. Maybe it's not doing the whole goal. Maybe it's doing part of the goal, right? I think we can be smarter if we collaborate on this more together, plan it more ahead of time. I think we'll probably be more successful. And there might be some outside expert opinion that the board might want to, you know, bring into that conversation as well.
Thank you, Ms. Omech. Ms. Corbett Sanders, would you like a go-back?
Yes, please. Thank you. And thank you, Dr. Presidio, for bringing us the additional data and getting the questions regarding professional development and the AAP cost so quickly. I appreciate that. I have actually wanted to delve into the math resource teacher at each of our elementary schools. I'm a big believer that that is a game changer. That is something that addresses opportunity gaps from school to school and one which also recognizes that it provides a skill that may not be available, as readily available to the whole staff. So it's a wonderful opportunity. Did you give us an exact number for how much that would cost?
No, I didn't do that, but I'd be happy to do that as a follow-up next step.
I would like to. You know, and just for my colleagues to know, some of you who know me a little bit, I kept my children out of the AAP center because the local school decided that they would invest in a math resource teacher. And the value of that math resource teacher, not only to the students who had been accepted into the AAP center and stayed at the base school, but to all of the students in that school was phenomenal. And so much so that many of the kids who participated in the pull-out math or the push-in math programming of this teacher certainly benefited not only through elementary school, but they were very successful in pursuing math and science at the middle and high school level as well as at the university level. And these are students who didn't necessarily get accepted into the AAP programs, but it was because of the robust math programming at the elementary school that it was a game changer. So I fully support that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders. Ms. Cohen, do you have a go-back? And then you would be followed by Ms. Tolan.
I do. Thank you so much. I wanted to, I guess, piggyback a little bit off what Ms. McLaughlin was talking about and get your thoughts about AP versus dual enrollment. We just did, just had our IP yesterday and trying to pick classes for my 11th grader. And, and I guess your thoughts on when I look at that line item in the budget about how much our AP and IB tests are costing us. Do you see a potential for us to transition away from AP and towards the dual, more of the dual enrollment? Looking just from a parent perspective, it's really difficult to see what the advantage for kids would be to take an AP versus that dual enrollment.
Well, you know, I wish there was an easy answer to this. You know, I mean, in a sense, it depends on what, what the student is looking for in that experience. There's, there's not a one-size-fits-all approach to, you know, earning secondary, you know, credit while you're in high school, which I know is one of the major considerations oftentimes when people take these classes is that, you know, they're hoping that they're going to earn the college credit while in high school and save money. The dual enrollment courses are incredibly important for us in terms of getting more students, more access to rigorous courses and college credit, right? That is a huge growth program that, that we need to really focus on. That being said, you know, if a student earns credits in dual enrollment, there's not always a guarantee that the college is going to accept those credits, just like there's not a guarantee that they're going to accept AP or IB. So, you know, we work really hard in the programs to make sure that the Virginia colleges and universities are accepting the credits. But, you know, we can't control what happens in Massachusetts when that student chooses to go to school out of state. So there's still not a guarantee there within the state. You know, there's more certainty about whether or not a student is going to get credit. Oftentimes, the content of these classes is different. You know, these three programs are not necessarily the same, even when they're teaching similar content and subject matter. The way that the con, the way that the classes are taught, what they focus on is different. You know, there's, that's particularly true with respect to the IB program and the focus on internationalism and international learning. There, there's much more, I would say, program difference there than, than one might expect with, you know, a course title, for example. So it really depends. There's different, different purposes. I think sometimes there's a different, you know, market for the different programs and it, I'm sorry, I'm going on too long. I think that was the beep for me to, to stop. But I mean, we, this, this warrants a lot more discussion is what I would say.
Yeah, I guess, you know, part of my question would be, what is the mechanism for principals to have feedback in that? Like, we hear a lot from teachers about some of the pressure to teach to the AP test as opposed to really offering that full rigor that was initially the intent. So I guess, how do you gather the input from principals about what programming at their schools kind of works best for their communities? Or is there a way to do that?
Well, again, it depends on the program. You know, with respect to, you know, IB, if we were going to implement a new program, you know, the principals have to be very excited about that and have to lead the program, and it has to make sense for their school community. You know, in terms of how they get feedback, you know, that's one of the strengths of the IB program is you get external feedback from the IB organization, you know, every, at least every five years. And you get a program improvement plan, you know, and you get the external review. And there's a cost associated with that, but that's huge. You know, you don't get that from, you know, the college board at AP. You don't get that for dual enrollment, you know, unless we were to choose to do that ourselves within Fairfax County. So again, this, this is probably a much longer conversation because the nuanced difference between these three programs, I think, is really important in understanding when, you know, before we would make any decisions about, you know, how we might want to prioritize or invest funds differently.
Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Tolan?
For some reason, my video is not coming up, so I just have one more question I wanted to ask. I know, Dr. Presidio, you talked earlier about, you know, how much your work overlaps with school support. And I also know that your instructional tech organization, their work overlaps and they collaborate closely with, you know, our technology group. So just looking at, you know, streamlining, you know, the organization overall, I'm wondering if you have any thoughts or if you've started conversations with Mr. Senti, for example, or you moving into your new position as well. How, especially for these programs that overlap different organizations so much, how can we really look at streamlining that work?
Well, I think it's a really good question. I guess what I would say is, you know, there's even, using technology as an example, you know, the roles of different departments are more specialized and focused. So, you know, for example, not to oversimplify it, but, you know, and, and I agree, the role of the technology team members that we have are really a model development and best practices, technology. And the IT department, of course, it's really about, you know, how to optimize, you know, the hardware and the software configurations, you know, for ease of use and, you know, for safety and security, for example. But to me, I think that where we're having the most success is the cross-departmental collaboration on project teams where it's really clear what the goals of the project team are. You know, so for example, you know, we just completed the RFP process to replace Blackboard Collaborate Video Conference with Zoom. You know, that was cross-departmental collaboration with ISD, EIT, and others, really coming together to do that work together and bring the unique perspectives and skills that are necessary to do that work well. So, you know, I don't, often don't think that a lot of reorganization makes a lot of sense as much as to figure out, you know, what are the, what are the priorities of the school system that we're trying to serve? And how do we organize ourselves across departments with the right people to do that work? As to, you know, where office organizational chart, you know, do they fit into?
All right. It always comes back to that, what's our strategy? Where are we headed, right? What are the goals? So that's an obvious next big step. But thank you so much again to you and your staff for everything you put together today. It's been, it's extremely helpful.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan. Ms. Keys-Gamaro? Do you have it? Dr. Ivy, would you like to speak to that? Well, Ms. Keys-Gamaro, you're, you're next, but Dr. Ivy is up. It looks like you want to say something.
Sure. I was just going to say that I think the last several months and our work through the pandemic has brought about many opportunities for greater cross-collaboration and the absolute necessity for it. And so while I think there's always room for improvement, I think that the last, say, even year, we've really progressed in a, in a very positive way in making sure that we are across departments working together. And I know Dr. Presidio and I have talked about that quite a bit. He's been a champion of this work. And it's happening more organically than it ever has. And we haven't had to force the meetings or make sure that, you know, people are checking with each other. And some of that has come from lessons learned, but it's, it, it's much better than it used to be.
Good to hear. Thank you, Dr. Ivy. Ms. Keys-Gamaro, followed by Ms. Ms. Keys-Gamaro, followed by Ms. Seismarheiser.
So I think I mentioned what I was looking forward to in terms of, in my first go-round. If Dr. Presidio needs me to put that in writing in some form, I can, but I don't think I need to repeat it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Ms. Seismarheiser, followed by Dr. Anderson.
Can you guys hear me okay? I'm having issues. Perfect. Thank you. Just a couple of quick points. Dr. Presidio, I know you've touched on this a little bit, but when you talk, I think you mentioned somewhere in your presentation in terms of developing the basal curriculum and materials, that it's been 20 years since you've really done a whole field development of that. I apologize if I misunderstood you, but could you just expand a little bit on, on what you meant and the impact that has on sort of consistency of curriculum across the county?
So what I was referring to with that 20-year period of time was since our last central purchase of materials for elementary language arts for all schools. You know, we obviously, every year do curriculum revisions in our content areas, but, you know, we hadn't invested, excuse me, in a large-scale purchase for approximately 20 years.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. I wanted to make sure I understood that correctly. One of the questions I had is when you talk about developing curriculum and materials, you know, each year or redeveloping or freaking them, it seems like a lot of our classes sort of have materials that either teachers develop or they get from central office. What's the amount that central office is involved in sort of helping provide some of these materials to teachers as opposed to some of them sort of creating some of their materials their own? I've just noticed, you know, anecdotally, a trend away from textbooks the last few years. And so how do you, how does that work with consistency and where are you at in terms of needing to, to work on that?
Well, I mean, we want teachers to develop their own materials. We don't want them to feel like they have to and they don't have centrally provided materials, but we encourage creativity and, you know, innovation, obviously. We want teachers to do that. I think, you know, part of, sometimes what people don't see again is they don't see that hard copy textbook, so they don't understand things that are centrally provided. You know, again, like, you know, we have different math programs that are part of our math adoption that kids are involved in, and those are basal resources, but you wouldn't know it because it's not packaged in a hardbound, you know, textbook. We do have hardbound textbooks as well, but sometimes it's not as obvious. Additionally, I would say, you know, we do a lot of curriculum development centrally that we provide through what's at the elementary level called our planning and pacing guides. So material that, for that content area for the full year, on a quarter-by-quarter basis where we provide the units of study, we provide not just, you know, lesson materials that are available to teachers to use with their students and assessments that are available, but also we provide what are called teacher notes that the teachers understand the concepts and the skills in that particular unit of study based on state standards. The kids need to develop, master, provide tips and strategies about how to support students, identify areas where, you know, frequent gaps where students might, you know, identify struggle or confusion. So we provide not just the materials, but also, you know, information on how to use the materials with, with students as well. And then of course, when teachers develop their own, that's great. We want them to do that. But we want to give as strong of a base of a curriculum as we can to every teacher in every classroom in Fairfax County.
I have a question to get back to, but before I lose track of time again, I want to ask a little bit about the arts programming. And I appreciate that quick response about possibly 144, 145,000 students access the arts programming. Can you tell me in your expert opinion, what you think the connection is between arts programming and the ability to work on some of our graduate skills like creativity and teamwork and things like that?
Yeah, well, I mean, there's a huge connection. I mean, first of all, I mean, the arts is a connection to school for so many of our kids. Why they get up and, you know, log on to the computer right now. It's why they get up and go to school. I mean, that engagement and the passion, you know, to stay involved and actively involved in school. So, I mean, it's more than just a content area. For a lot of our kids, it's, you know, really not just even their passion, it's their identity. So they're critically involved. And we have to start that, you know, experience with students early so that they don't, you know, miss out on something that, that perhaps might be a passion that they could develop over time. So there's that piece that, you know, and there's also the piece that it gets kids connected to school. And oftentimes, as you said, gets kids connected to other kids, you know, and develops, you know, healthy social emotional peer groups. You know, when you think about students that are playing together in a band, you know, that's just as important as students that are playing together on a sports team. You know, you think about students that are working together on a musical or drama performance. That's just as much, you know, focus as any other team that we might think about in, in the educational setting. So incredibly, incredibly important for so many different reasons and in so many different ways.
Really quickly, I thought on, the slide numbers aren't popping up for me, but there's 0.4 million on finance car fees. And I know what finance car is, but I would encourage you to consider sort of, if we can, expanding the use of it if possible, because I think it's a great resource that's underutilized in some ways. But I just wanted to put that out there. And then the last thing, I just had a very quick question on where young scholars, like, fall into that, in charge of it, where is that funding coming from? You know, what resources? I just, I'm not quite sure how to put it to all of these people.
Well, that's a great question. So it's our Advanced Academic Program Office. And remember, we really don't have centralized funding, you know, dedicated to young scholars. You know, that comes out of our Advanced Academic Program Budget, which is part of the Curriculum and Instruction Office Budget. So all of that is like trickling down. We haven't said as a school system that we're going to spend X amount of dollars on young scholars. The closest thing that we've said to that is with respect to our summer program. When we put together programs for summer school enrichment programs, young scholars is a part of that. But that's again, another area that, you know, if, if it's a division priority, may need to be articulated, you know, in the division's budget as well.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I missed my colleague, Ms. Darni Kofax, who talks very highly of young scholars, but I know there's a lot of research around the benefits of young scholars. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Dr. Anderson.
Sorry, it's taken me a minute to get all my screens up. I, I think the question that I have regarding strategic plan follow-up, I was fully discussed, but I don't think to get into that. I do have a question though. As, as we're talking about mental health and investing in psychologists and counselors, et cetera, one of the things that I'd like to have some response to, Dr. Presidio, are the Cal teachers through your shop? And if so, where does that show up in the permitting here? Because I know some schools have Cal teachers.
I didn't hear the, that entirely. Which teachers?
Cal, the Cal Project, C A L M.
I don't believe those. And I'm checking to see if anybody on our team knows the answer for sure. And I do see DSS staff are here. I think that might be in DSS, but I'm not positive about that.
Does anybody know?
Good afternoon, Dr. Anderson. This is Michelle Boy. I don't know offhand, but I will certainly follow up with Deb Scott, because if it's in DSS, it will be within her purview. But we can open to that for you.
Okay, thank you so much. And then I think I just have one other question. No, I, I think one of my other questions were addressed, so I won't take any more time. I know we have ACSD waiting. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Mr. Frisch, would you like to go back? Guess not. Um, oh, Carl. Carl, your mic is going off and on. I'm, I'm going to come back to you to see if you need to go back. Next, I have Ms. McLaughlin and finally Ms. Marin, if you need to go. Ms. McLaughlin.
Okay, um, so I just wanted to circle back on some of the information that Dr. Presidio given us. And actually, Dr. Presidio, I think most of this probably comes from the board and the superintendent having a conversation with one another, because as you are describing, what you do feel as an LT member, what we need to do at the board level, I'm still struggling at a very macro level that because the board is elected, we're here to provide oversight and governance. But in the end, the superintendent and the leadership team are supposed to be operational experts. So we can't really provide effective oversight and governance. We don't have that expert educational analysis that comes to us for either the strategic plan conversation and then frankly, every year for the budget approval process. So I know we won't solve it in today's program budget conversation, but I really do want to encourage my colleagues that I think we're going to, maybe we need to talk more with each other. Maybe it's a form of topic conversation. But I'm a little worried about, you know, the cart before the horse. Who's leading what? Who's driving what? But when you talk about annually making decisions, even something as like the AP, IB and dual enrollment program, I'm really relying on Dr. Presidio's scheme and the superintendent to be doing that kind of analysis of what's it costing to run these programs? What are we hearing about college credit? At the quality of the programs, but the usage piece. So IB is an amazing program, but it is very expensive. And anyone who does the analysis between AP versus IB, cost per people, will see it's significant. And we run it all the way down to the middle years program, to the elementary years program. And in my time on the board, we've not had that, a real discussion about return on investment. So I, I, I wanted to just make that follow-up comment.
Thank you.
How do you feel about what I've captured?
Yeah, no, I think that's a good, I think that's a good summary statement. And, you know, obviously, you know, I personally would want to be involved in those conversations. You know, if we're having board-level conversations about, you know, the value of one program over another or, you know, the continued value or, or not of a particular program, because we would have a lot of information that would help that discussion as well as, you know, but also, you know, information in terms of stakeholder perspectives. And we have a lot of that. And I didn't want to suggest that we don't have it or that we don't use it. It's just, you know, for example, when you're talking about, you know, a program like AP versus IB, that, that also would need to be a board-level discussion was my point. So that's what I mean by macro-level discussions.
Sure, but I'm not saying to get rid of IB. I don't want anyone.
Thank you.
I wanted to clarify to Ms. Marin. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Marin?
Yeah, I just wanted to provide somewhat of a closing, since we are running late to meet with ACSD and then to you, Mr. Darni Kofax, if you'd like. I just want to reiterate, this has been such an enlightening conversation. I've actually gotten some emails from constituents who are watching and have found that it's really refreshing to see the way that the board is being informed. You know, Dr. Presidio, you sat here for several hours and shown quite in-depth knowledge of all of this. It's clear that, you know, we need expertise like yours and the budget staff. It's so that the board did push to have this kind of program data analysis presented. It's been tough to schedule. And I think if, as a board, you know, when we look at the way that we collaborate and do work, this is a great model. And, you know, as Ms. McLaughlin said, the more we can talk together, it can be better. I know relatedly, I've, I've reached out to each of my colleagues about on our governance manual and to just help us keep streamlining to get to these really important conversations. So thank you, and, and I look forward to continuing these program reviews in the months ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Marin, and I too want to extend my thanks to you, Dr. Presidio. This is why you are now, after your tenure here, the head of our instructional services. We are so pleased to have you in that position. Thank you for distilling this in a way that was understandable and enlightening and also provoked questions for further analysis and review. I think that's exactly what these sessions were intended to do. So thank you so much for that. And I do want to remind everyone that if there was a question unanswered and it relates to, of course, that this is, these are, this is about instructional services, but if it relates to the budget, a budget item within instructional services, please address that to Ms. Burden and we will, as part of your budget questions, and we will get back to you. And I, I do want to end by saying, I think, I, I think we do need to move forward as far as after the pandemic, post, you know, post-COVID, where and, and when we get caught up where we need to be. I do think maybe there can be, as we get into the summer months, have a parallel track running and absolutely invite the community as part of this and some of these big broad questions about what should we offer? What do we need more of? What is something that's run its course? It's been a great, it had a great tenure, but it's run its course and, you know, in everyone's mind, I think that could be something different. So, Mr. Smith, you look like you would like to say something as well.
Yeah, I, I would just like to thank Dr. Presidio and his team, as well as Ms. Burden, Alice Wigginton and the budget staff for working to support Dr. Presidio and for creating the format for which we were using today. And Dr. Presidio and his team for enhancing that format. So thank you all.
Exactly. So thank you all. Thank you, Dr. Presidio. This session of the budget work session is, the, the instructional service budget work session is complete. And may I suggest that we reconvene at, it's 2:56 AM. Suggest we begin our next session at 2:05. And that will be Ms. Seismarheiser managing that work session. Thank you all.